Nah, I won't come up.
We can all move over there.
Yeah. Comfortable.
We're here just trying to check in back in to see what your guys' thoughts are on the empty lots. I spoke to Ron before Christmas. And he had mentioned about possibly doing more of a little pocket park on the corner of the courthouse. And just cleaning that up and leaving that as its open space over there. Which, talking to Matt early, late last fall, he used the word to us like a multi-purpose. And I think maybe that's kind of what we're thinking, and it's kind of what Ron's thinking, like, just cleaning up those lots, getting like a hard surface down, you know, something the rec center could host like pickleball tournaments, basketball tournaments, if it needs to be parking, um, food trucks could pull in, like music can pull in. And um, ice skating rink through the rec department, maybe through the holiday season. But just kind of proceeding that way, but we're kind of here to get your thoughts and see where your banks are at.
It's a little bit of a shift from the last time we talked.
You don't want to do this anymore?
Well, I mean, Ron called me, we talked in December as well, about the same idea with the southwest corner of the county courthouse lawn. I don't know at that time, I can't remember, Carley and I can't remember if the supervisors, if you had talked to the supervisor about that.
I had, I had talked to a couple of the supervisors that were coming in. Uh. And they were somewhat okay with it. As I say, we need to figure out, we need to go to a supervisor's meeting, see if they're open to something like this. I hate to, I hate to tie up that lot.
The. Tie it up with regards to it being dedicated as just a park area?
Well, I, I. I, I think, this is just my thought. I think it would be better to have a parking lot there myself, myself. I don't know how it feels, how it feels about it, but. That way, if a business comes into town, has you got any lots going, which I had talked to Chris about this a while back, about advertising, we have lots down, or a lot, two lots, whatever downtown, to build a business on, where you've got a lot of room on the courthouse lawn. And if we would do something twenty eighty or something with the county, and utilize that whole frontage of Forest Street, or part of that frontage of Forest Street, as what you want to do with your pickleball and everything else. I mean, it, it just sits there and it's, it costs them money to mow it all the time and everything else, so, that's just my thought.
Same. I would like to say, I like the original plan. So, that's his, that's not my, what I was thinking. I like what we originally, you guys originally came up with, more than a parking lot, so. It's not everybody that thinks that.
Yeah, this is the first I've heard about any of that, so, little shock that we're discussing December, though we're just now hearing about it, Ron.
Yeah.
Yes.
We talked, we were right here talking about it.
You said nothing about southwest corner of the courthouse, how you've talked to the county already.
I haven't talked, I have not talked to the county.
And if you guys want to go out with the county and work on it, that's fine, but the city event won't be involved, so.
We're not trying to start anything at all here. Our, like, I, an opportunity was, was presented and we didn't really know which direction we should go after the last meeting, so we're just throwing out other options that have been discussed. That's, that's all we're doing.
What does the city want? What do you guys want in there?
It's what the council wants to decide as a whole.
Right, right.
That's what that is, and I don't know what they're all thinking. I know where Ron's at, I know where Wes is at.
I think more or less that's where we're at right now. That's, that's what we need. It's just, with this work session right now, we need to get clear guidance from all of you all.
And I, and I will vote against it, and if I had to vote, I will against, I will not get a twenty eighty agree with the county. They have not been forthcoming to work with city event on anything, and I'll be damned if I'm gonna work with them on anything, so.
We know where you're standing. Yeah, no, that's fair, I mean.
I, I like the idea of the pocket park, if, if, if the parks are, are on board, park department's on board, I mean, you know, of course, financing it and everything else, but I like, I like the idea.
I like the idea of the first one, and then keeping the second lot, I don't know, not, not necessarily green space, but a hard surface where activities can be had, vans can set up, something like that. And so maybe this first one wouldn't necessarily have that partition wall, would be more.
So like, if that original park stays and then more multi-purpose area.
Yeah, kind of open on to the second lot.
Yeah, in all fairness.
That was all drawn up before that, for the second lot.
Right, 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 right. But then now, you know, with the, the wall on the, the Benton County title building, possibly having a staircase on it, just for future stuff. I like this idea, and then just maybe taking that wall down and having it open and keeping the empty lot nice and somehow.
Well, we should cross that bridge first. Are they gonna be allowed to put a staircase on there because they don't have an easement onto our lots?
Correct. Um, they don't have an easement yet, and um, been talking to Doug about that, about uh, how that wall would be handled. He said he was gonna do some research, he said he believed that now because it, that there's only one business there. There's something in Iowa code, according to Doug, that the wall becomes one hundred percent theirs. But he was going to research and come back with the absolute definitive answer on that.
But they wouldn't be able to encroach onto our property for a fire escape?
Correct. They would, they would not. Not, not unless there's an easement.
Which what they have built back, what they have sitting on the ground back there encroaches quite a bit. So in that case, we wouldn't even have to quit claiming.
Correct.
ownership.
Right, and that's what.
They would own it by default.
Correct.
Well, if they came to us for an easement, what would, what would your thoughts be?
Want me to answer first? Firstly, I'll be more than happy to answer. I would say no, because it's gonna lessen the value of those lots to the prospective bus- the prospective business that might come in.
There's definitely that point, no doubt about it.
But.
Because that easement will be for perpetuity.
Yeah.
But, as Chris was trying to say in one of the meetings, was that uh, how many months ago?
Uh, months?
Well, yeah. Basically, when they first came.
Right.
You were trying, you were eloquently trying to keep away from saying that if we put a park there, it'll never go away.
Right, and that's, that's typically what happens with parks. Um, once you have a park, it stays as a park, and usually, um, yeah, I've seen where cities have tried to, tried to reverse having a park, and no longer have a park there, and turn it developable land and.
That's where I came up with the idea of the courthouse lawn, bud, and I'm sorry I didn't talk to you about it.
The problem is, don't, don't sound like you talked to anybody, except.
He, he brought it to me.
Yes, I did.
Andrew?
He brought it to me. I think we gotta be, yeah, I mean, all on board with the park forever, and that, I mean, you know, I don't see how we can be on board for a while.
I, I, that's what I was gonna say, I think that what we're looking for, and I don't know, I don't know where council sits on this, and I, I, is what do you all want out of the lot? Do we, do you guys want to explore selling them for a prospective business? I mean, cause I know that came up as well, so I mean, like, I, I think that what the group is at right now, because our momentum has kind of stalled out a little bit, quite frankly, in the last probably quarter of the year, just because we're at a little bit of a standstill, because uh, everybody here's busy, has a lot of stuff going on, and we don't want to throw a ton of effort into something that we may not know whether or not it's gonna happen or not. Now, if we know it's gonna happen, then obviously we can move forward in a, in a different direction. But, we don't, we don't want to do that without knowing what it is that you all want us to do, so.
So the one lot is parked, the other lot is not parked, so that the, it's, it's, we still have to decide on, we would still have to decide on that stairway if we're gonna let that, that stairway be built. Correct, cause that's still their end goal, is to get stairway built.
And if you don't have an answer for us right now, that's sufficient too, we just will wait until, I mean, I don't want to keep kicking this can down the road, but.
No, again, I don't want you to invest a bunch of money into something that, you know, I know we're gonna try and keep it economical to make things thing, and make it movable. I know you'd send out those, that one thing of the actual pods that could move basically anywhere you wanted, in very short order.
Yeah.
And that's why I always kept bringing up, because we do have another parking lot, if we do get some interesting buyers, we could just move the park over to the parking lot.
It was brought up at that time, you know, when you started, that's not, I'm not saying that term is temporary, but when that term is, when it's not forever, fundraising, I assume gets a lot tougher.
We don't know that either, cause we haven't gone to, or started anything, because
Now, I don't know.
Yeah. Yeah.
We had nothing to show, other than original drawing, which we knew changes were gonna be made from that.
It's, and I'm just throwing a complete total guess out there. But I would be of the opinion that when we start to make some of the downtown beautification changes that we make this summer, that there's probably gonna be a push for something to happen with that lot, to make it look
Oh, something has to.
A lot nicer.
It's a common question, we prob- I think, and we probably all.
Yeah.
What are we doing?
I did.
Yeah, it's, no doubt.
I mean, you could look at a scenario, anywhere from a, from a parking lot, all the way down to like what LaPorte did with their little downtown area. I could see something master planned like that, that we, maybe we have to spend a little bit of money on, but then we have something that's professionally designed and done. Or we can do something that is temporary, that you guys have talked, we have options, but we.
Would having the two lots be too much? Would we not want to make it that big?
I would be fine, I mean, I, I personally don't think those two lots are that big, to do that. I mean, I think they're not, they'd be nice sized lots for a business, but I mean, if you're gonna put something in there to have people and a van, like vans and downtown activities and stuff like that, like you'd want to have something of that size for seating, pergolas and like other things that I would envision being downtown there, I mean.
I'm just thinking that based off the original drawings that we had, and that was just the one lot, like, is that gonna be, is like, is there gonna be a reason why we wouldn't want to have, you know, other than, you said maybe so it's not permanent, so we can do something with it?
It's a really tight space.
I think it'd be a very tight place to put a business, then next to that parking lot too, but I guess it could happen.
I know it was brought up months ago too, but I think a bathroom is very realistic to have there downtown.
So, so let's talk about bathroom, cause that might be a roadblock. Cause that's not gonna be inexpensive. What would be, I mean, are there requirements that we put a bathroom in? Or if we just, on special occasions, special downtown events, have porta potties put in?
You could do that, that second option, have porta potties down for um, for special events. Just because you have park space, doesn't mean you have to have restrooms at that, although would be somewhat inconvenient, but it, it has been done before for parks.
And the idea you're inviting more people downtown, certain times and without permanent facilities, but you would have the import bodies, I understand, but yeah.
The ports doesn't have bathrooms.
You wouldn't.
You don't, you don't have to have them.
But we wouldn't want to put further strain on the downtown, which, which is lacking of restaurants.
And we have the courthouse traffic and, and employees that I would hope would go over and use it too, and not just for, for special events necessarily, so.
Yes.
So I'm gonna flip the tape, as business owners, what would you like to say?
Of course, I mean, originally, but I'm gonna be honest, we've lost committee members and momentum, just because it's been, and I know it was nobody's fault because they were trying to get the second lot. But um, I guess, for sure, we want a park there, but realis- I mean, we're trying to be realistic too, and let's feasible.
So in the Realtor part of the world, are you looking for lots downtown?
It hasn't been advertised yet.
Yeah, but usually they'll call and ask for things for sale downtown.
There, people are always looking for buildings downtown, yes. Not necessarily to build a building downtown. But yes, people are always looking for a place downtown.
I mean, it just feels like it's either gonna be park and we just get, we just go away from the idea of having to be a sellable lot. Or we don't have a park and we have empty lots that we can sell.
To conditionally try to sell them for X amount of time, and then.
That's what I was thinking.
If it doesn't happen.
We're gonna advertise them for six months, if they're not sold, we're gonna go put the parks in.
Then you know, right, then it's, then you've done due diligence, and that was, and then we can get to work on whatever, knowing this is what it is, or it isn't what it is. I mean, you never know when you open them up, some developer might be like, oh, that's a great place for whatever, I don't know. You would know that better. That's, the unfortunate part is it sits empty again for a second.
That's what I thought. We lost two taxable businesses off the, basically.
Yeah.
Yeah, the records, because we don't wanna.
Well, and in the meantime, I mean, if, I imagine, I don't know if there's any prep that has to be done to them or something like that, but if you wanted to throw a tiny bit of money at it, we could always do something temporary out there that we could throw together. I mean, it doesn't take a whole lot to put some trees in, a couple of pots, and do some other, I mean, like, to do kind of what I showed you guys, I mean, I don't know, then you could see if it gets any traction with the.
We could literally go put a couple octagon picnic tables over there, zero dollars almost.
Which we should, we should.
We, we gotta do something.
We should have done.
Yeah, we gotta.
We should have done that, probably.
Umbrellas to provide some shade.
I mean, we could, I mean, we could do, I mean, we could build some, so we could build pergolas for pretty inexpensive, and like, I mean, like, gussy it up a little bit, you know, I mean, like, make it look attractive for people to want to come over there, in the meantime, but be, but the problem that you're into then too, is that if people really like it, and then you end up selling lots and people are getting pissed off about it. Welcome to my world.
Yeah.
Yeah.
At one point, it was a popular idea that we were gonna go with.
I thought it was really popular.
Everybody I talked to loved it.
Yeah, it would hit the front page of the paper, and yeah, it was.
I think, if, if we make a decision to like go with it, like, do you think you'd be able to get community members and community members back to, you know,
Especially with Matt, that's gonna be our lead, and you know, we're here to support him and.
Excited about it again?
Me being your selling point.
But, I mean, yeah, with park and rec being on board.
It's an easy tie-in to our downtown beautification, quite frankly. I mean, if that's what you decide to go with, it's an easy thing to say, like, we're doing this, and now we're also doing, like, we're adding this to. It, it would probably be something, though, that we would need to look at getting some help with, with, from a design perspective, I mean, like, that's just, throwing that out there, I mean, if it's something that you want to make permanent, um, we want to make it nice, and that's not something that, I mean, Alan's great, but.
Well, I say we do step, we advertise lots for sale for six months, if we don't get any bites or any real leads, then we know there's not very much interest.
Agreed.
And that way, when anybody comes up, it's like, why didn't you advertise them lots? We had them on the market for six months, we got.
That's a fair point, at least we did our due diligence there.
Yeah.
Yes.
Cause I could see some, I could see other people when it starts to become more of a thing, like, being like, hey, we lost two businesses.
Yeah, and that's, that's a very valid point.
You didn't even make an attempt to try to.
You know, would it be, like, it's just selling it as two different lots then? Like, so two different businesses?
Or the option to buy them both, then two separate lots, somebody wants it all, they might move. I don't know what the value of a downtown lot is, Realtor woman.
I think we give them away.
I would.
Pretty, pretty much.
Last time they were such a downtown lot.
Yeah, signed a contract and built. I don't know, I'd say both lots and the seniors plumbing and heating on it and.
Would we pay for one?
Yeah, where's our comparables?
I think we're gonna be our own comparable, for what we paid for.
That was zero, can't sell them for zero.
That was more than zero, it was a dollar.
More than zero for.
Well, that's true. We gotta reduce down though.
Okay, so. We're gonna advertise for six months, in the meantime, do we want to continue discussions on if the lots don't sell, how we're going to move forward, otherwise we're pushing it back.
I mean, if they don't sell, just put the park in.
I would, I would say like next steps on that would be that, you know, if six mon- after six months it doesn't sell, then we put together an RFP for design and build on that space.
In the meantime, we can decide if we want to go all the way with the restroom or not.
And I've got plenty of folks that I can reach out to, in the meantime, to kind of like get some feelers for cost on that or something like that.
If we do advertise them, and they do sell, I assume we are going to have caveats, that they have to have something built on them within
Oh, yeah.
Like eighteen months or.
You can, you can definitely do that.
No, that's, then like, if I'm gonna sell, to have somebody just let them say it.
The only thing I think stinks about that, this whole plan, like, I, I, I think it's a good plan, but it's like, it'll be the end of summer by the time we know that we can do, put a park on it.
Six months is June.
Well, yeah, so.
The other alternative too, I mean, like you said, but.
What is the temporary band- aids for?
If we're willing to move something over to the other parking lot, if they do so, is there an option to potentially use the other parking lot too and develop that?
Develop that into what?
Into a park, if you were wanting something downtown like that.
Well, I would think so, cause we're maintaining it now, and all this is, I need the businesses of that, I need the businesses, the residents over there.
Right, so I mean, it's just, I mean, if, in lieu of, you know, potentially having this one go to something else, if that's not being utilized to its fullest capacity.
The other lot you're talking about is over there.
By Dr. Stevens?
No, it's the one west of Iowa State Extension.
Yeah.
Oh, that way up there, huh?
Yeah.
I mean, it's, I.
I mean, I don't know, I, part of me was, I thought there'd be a little bit more discussion on, should this be a parking lot to relieve some of the parking problems? And then the idea that we're not gonna park them out there, and then we're gonna take away, yeah, more parking, I don't think, you know, I, I.
I, that's fine.
I didn't think.
I would just.
Yeah, no, I, I think.
Well, I say we see if we get them full first.
It's a good problem to have, though. You, oh, your parking is full.
Yes, oh yeah, I was talking about it today with somebody, it's like, it's, yeah, downtown's full.
I don't know, don't, I, don't drive by that one during the day. Is it full?
It's.
I've, I've, I've had to use it a time or two.
Yeah, it's, it's got cars in it.
Continuing education.
It's got cars in it.
It's not empty, it's not empty.
It's utilized for purpose, weird.
I wonder if everybody will shift over to Fairway.
It's, it's some of the, yeah, people that are renting those places right around, yeah, it's, it's, it's used.
Cool, game plan.
So how do we, how do we go about selling these lots?
See the legal description of them, um, for Doug, and we got a value for them, advertise them with the local realtor.
Well.
Courthouse, uh, can you tell me how many of those is there?
Twenty, twenty-five thousand pieces?
Well, no, we always, well, when we have them for sale, that's fine, I'm just thinking on the actual sale, that's when we do the public hearing and that sort of thing.
I'm even steps before that, like, do we list them, are we paying to advertise them somewhere? I mean, how much, how much effort are we putting into to sell them?
Well, it makes sense with effort.
Time and dollar wise, I mean.
More effort than what we put in so far.
Which isn't much.
Make the face of those.
Yeah.
We'll figure it out.
I don't, yeah.
We'll figure it out.
If anything, it's.
I don't mean it for sale, that's not, that don't count.
You know, no matter what comes out of this, at least we know those lots are gonna have a future now, but they've kind of just been sitting over there.
Yes.
Collecting.
Eight years.
Yeah.
If some, if somebody wants to uh, build a brewery over there.
Yeah, I know. We might even.
Selling, selling cheap for her.
Nice downtown.
And if you do, has some leftover picnic tables, maybe just drag them over there.
Well, that's, that's what, what, who, let's get it cleaned up first thing we can, who does that?
No, right now, it's just the city, so it's usually the street department, the ones who are out there cleaning stuff up like that, so.
We can easily drag some tables over and gussy it up and we can order a few more hanging baskets.
That's what I was gonna say.
Put them over there.
Flyer to go on with what everybody else we're doing.
Yep. See how much it gets used. And do we, at one point?
Decision on that stairway, that fire escape.
We just tell them no.
They have to put on their classifieds.
I'd wait for Doug to come back, but.
Yeah, they have no right to encroach on our properties, cause they own the wall now.
Correct.
It's the same, if they sold it to somebody else, they're gonna tell them no, so.
Yeah.
But, what was he researching?
Make sure that wall can actually be there.
Yeah, cause I would assume the whole half thing is in case somebody else wants to come and build something and just attach onto their wall, ooh.
Correct.
That's why it's the half and half thing. And that's probably something we should look at, probably maintaining, just in case.
Just in case, but that's what Doug.
We'll know in six months if it's a just in case.
Exactly.
So your guys' directive is to, okay. I can do that.
Not the time it warms up, is when it gets really warm, we'll have a decision. Either, and all there'll be buildings up there in twelve to eighteen months after June, or be a park.
It's a little bit more, more waiting, but we should have an answer.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We discuss anything else, not only agendas, such as just a work session, or?
I thought that's why we were advised to have workshops.
No, we're advised to have work sessions, so that people who weren't on their agenda can actually talk. I was wondering if we talked about that.
Well, yeah.
Cars, have they needed?
Mm-hmm.
They have them.
Yeah, didn't, didn't they report that at our last meeting, that there was only two or three cars left in there?
No. No, there are cars drawn.
What?
From where, uh, the seat house?
Yeah, yeah, he had, he had gotten most of them out of there.
Yeah, they.
Yeah.
No, I haven't heard of it.
I've heard of that.
There's no report.
What meeting were you to at?
No, I told, you, you asked me about it specifically.
He didn't report it to the meeting.
No, Blake wasn't at the meeting, but yeah, I thought he'd gotten everything out, I thought he was good to go.
Blake hasn't been at a meeting for a while.
Last time I heard, like, you asked a question like, um, I like the last meetings, asking what happened.
The last time we talked about it. That was in, in December still.
Was this supposed to be on January first or?
Yeah, it was supposed to be on January first.
So. Alright, so, uh, January ninth, at two twenty-three PM, you texted me. You texted me about that, about whether Blake is gonna be at the meeting, he goes, I'll check and let you know, and said, is this about, they asked you, is this about the seat house, because according to chief taxes, the vehicles are moved and they are in compliance. Blake stepped out, so I asked the chief, who I texted, that's the last text I asked.
So that's what, yes, okay.
Thanks for sharing.
I, I.
When, when, when council members send me texts, I don't.
My dad just kicking in.
When council members send me texts, I don't say, hey, guess who texted me, uh, yes, who's that one, no, no, no.
See, bud, we're all going rogue, aren't we?
Right, because then I was gonna ask.
Tammy's getting car moved, you're selling this to the county, goddamn right.
It's like, wow, okay, I'm like.
So, chief said they're in compliance?
Yes, that, that's.
I swear he said that at our meeting, but.
It wasn't at the meeting.
I know he wasn't at the meeting, I know.
It wasn't at the meeting, it was before the meeting, it was, it was, it was two weeks, it was two weeks ago today, a fortnight before.
See, as you can tell by the surprised look on everybody's faces, you know, I wasn't surprised that we're gonna tear down the county. See, as you can tell by the surprised look in everybody's faces, you know, almost surprised that we're gonna tear down the courthouse when it's on.
Holy crap. No, it was, it was, no, it was just a text, you texted me, uh, uh.
So, we might as well keep talking about it, what's next then? Was there any, what was the guidelines, was that? Was there anything else?
Yeah. Well, most cars gotta move, cause that would.
They hadn't until March or April.
And then Schmicky was supposed to come in this winter and start moving things down.
Right.
I'm gonna text Matt to see.
Well, Schmicky is busy doing something else.
But he was telling me he has not seen any money yet.
I don't know if that money's funneling through Kevin or funneling through.
I, I don't know about that.
Text Matt Schmicky.
I do know Schmicky's working on a different house on High Avenue.
I can see Kevin setting himself up to be the general.
See, what is the general?
And then.
Have you heard any more about the seed house?
Nobody has dementia.
If you ask me too many questions, it'll all prove.
You're like Cousin Eddie, I got the steel plate in my head and wouldn't walk there to the microwave.
Say, if we'll let more of us in on it, we really could've got on to it.
Swear, I could still almost swear we talked about it, I guess.
You texted me.
Well, I'm glad you kept that.
And they're turning a gas lighter.
I only know that term being.
The word of the year. Intentionally. Being you're crazy. Being you're doubt.
Okay, what else?
What else can we talk about?
I got something we can talk about. Oh boy, this is fun, oh boy, let's talk about airport.
Did you know, that was on the tip of my tongue as well. I don't know what part you wanna talk about, we can go ahead first.
I'm gonna go first, uh. Roughly over the next five years, we're looking at spending approximately half a million dollars out there. Uh, those numbers are not in stone whatsoever.
Whatsoever.
But just the needs of the runway replacements, all the five-year plan with our percentages of what we pay. Those percentages, if all that happens, which some of that has to happen for us out of airport, just gotta have a safe runway and everything else. Do I understand all this, someone correct me if I'm wrong, but we're looking at roughly half a million dollars.
Out of our pocket.
Out of our pocket. And obviously, things will change, we get different grants, we can pay more or less, but we should at least have that discussion, I think. Of how we are going to pay for that.
Well, how much of that, if any of it, do they build into their budget?
It is a very well subsidized club of private owners.
So, how much?
We're actually, I think, on the same page, and we do talk about that.
How much of that do they build into their budget? They're gonna come here next week.
They didn't, they tried, that's what happened last year on the budget, they tried to move the numbers around and make it look like they had more revenue, they did, they didn't have it. And we made them correct it, and then all of a sudden.
Well, now they're under new leadership, so I think that's a discussion we need to have, is like going forward, they need to be supporting their own weight a bit, at least.
Now, I think, my opinion, at least, the long-term thing is. We want an airport, this is pretty amazing.
Yeah, but we have to, right, Chris?
Yeah, I have to.
Well, when you receive grants like this.
Yeah, but if we don't own it, we just don't receive the grants.
The previous grants that we've received, I don't know how long, and that's maybe above everybody's pay grade here, but that's what has been talked about is. Once you start receiving those grants that we have in the past, you can't just pull the plug. Now, that's right or wrong, exactly, I don't know, but. That's kind of the discussion. Yeah, but we can't afford, we can't afford it, I mean, you know, can we have a grass runway, I mean, you know, can we have?
You got five thousand people subsidizing.
It, it doesn't make any sense to me, I'm saying, I love it, makes no sense to me.
Christ, the engineering fees on something.
And that's killing me.
Ridiculous. Now, we could own a golf course that lost money every year, we could own all kinds of things that lose us money every year, and we own an airport that.
Well, but like I said last time, I could see tax revenue from row crop acres. From the county going towards the airport.
Yep.
Before I can see taxing the citizens of that.
Boy, yeah, I don't like the idea of, you know, knowing you're a small businessman, super duper. Not have, you know, have, getting, losing a job, losing that income. But yeah, it does make a lot of sense, it's, we, we may have worked this long, but there are some significant costs coming up. And this probably isn't the end of it, I assume, it isn't like, once we get through this, it's.
It's a money pit.
It's never been this big of a money pit that I've seen, but I know there's been large expenses in the past from time to time that we've always made work, but these are significant.
Well, here, here you go, Ron, I'm gonna jump on your bandwagon.
Ron?
Yep.
Wow.
Holy shit, you go tell your county boys that we will maintain a park on Southwest Corner, they take over the airport.
I'll go with you.
Yeah, that's gonna land like a.
And that'll be a done deal.
I, I, I think there is merit to the county somehow, I mean, obviously, somehow getting involved in this.
Oh, we got, uh, two new members now.
Yep.
One old one.
But again, we should probably research, research whether we can actually pull the plug on it.
Well, eh, there's a difference between pulling the plug and not continuing to tax our citizens. Who've gained nothing from it. And just letting it shut down, the FF, if it gets to the point, the FFA is just, they're gonna shut it down.
If they could get to the point where it was self-sustaining.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
And I, but how are they ever gonna get to that?
It, I mean, it, it sounds like I'm kidding, but can we make it a much smaller, much, no, you know, big runways? All the dollars that go on these runways, can we make it a much smaller one that is local flyers? Even then, that doesn't make much sense, I realize, but at least the expenses of the, cause I assume we have that huge, this is, I don't know, I, I've not done research on this. But I assume we have huge runways for the bigger planes that can come and go.
They're not huge.
But.
Wouldn't, I'm just gonna say.
Yeah.
I'm just thinking, wouldn't this be a better conversation to have a joint meeting with the airport commission about?
That's what I'm saying, we need to have a.
Cause you're kind of pegging it to more policy things right now.
Just.
But as.
Giving you a warning.
As I was told a long time ago, by you, young man. You can't close an airport, I, I've told the same guy, that is already established.
That is correct, you gotta go through a, I think there's quite a bit of hoops. It can be done, I don't know how it's to be done, but it's not just, um, ninety days, it's done type.
Right, right.
No, but as they said, as he said, just, you stop paying for it. At some point.
Yeah, I, I wanna give, I mean, obviously, we're not pulling the plug on anything tonight, how do we wind up in default if we don't? Vote on spending two hundred and fifty thousand or five hundred thousand dollars of.
No, 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 I, I was, what I mean is, if you, there are different kinds of funds. There's your BIL funds, there's also your entitlement dol- dollars that come along with it, there are different requirements on that. With your entitlement dollars, they're just exactly that, entitlement dollars. So, it comes as, you're gonna get a hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollars every year, that's how it comes. It just comes, and there are projects that will be associated with those dollars. If you let the entitlement fund just sit there, you can do that and do nothing, but. I don't know what happens really at that point, but like I said, I think this might be a diff- uh, conversation to have.
Oh.
Don't honor the agenda. My recommendation, but you, you can continue if you wish, but I would.
To Andrew's point here, if we're at anybody's point, if you can't afford it, you can't vote for it. You can't just say, yeah, we're gonna put in a five million dollar runway and tax everybody five hundred thousand dollars, and we don't have the money to do that.
Correct.
That's a dollars and cents thing.
If we can come up with money, if they can come up with the money, okey dokey. It still is running a private club, but, okay.
Um, I would add, cause I do all of the airport hangar rent and billing for that. Um, the hangars are full and there's a waitlist, there's like three or four people on the waitlist right now for hangars. And them and the people that have come on recently aren't local people. They're, have planes other places, and they wanna come here because they like our airport, and it's cheaper.
It's cheaper.
Remember what the farmers were paying for rent?
Yeah, tell, tell them to go renegotiate that, ladies.
And they, whilst they did update their hangar rents.
Yeah, they increased.
April first of twenty-four.
Yep.
They redid their structure and increased rents.
Yep.
A little bit.
Well, we got half a million dollars to pay off.
Well, again, that's certainly a good change, it's, but, eh, the best we can come up with, the best estimate right now is, is close to that.
So, is that including the trees and, and is there anything else that we're talking about?
Oh, it actually was, but.
Yes, it was, it was, it was your whole list of CIPs.
Well.
But.
What fun thing.
How's our parking situation over here at the horse?
Actually, I stopped in there today and everything is going fine.
Yeah, right.
It looks, it looks.
What?
Don't like it, the fact that horses, um, employees are parking in the customer parking right here in the front.
They are?
Yes, they are.
Then I will, I'll stop back in there tomorrow.
Okay, thank you.
So they're parking out right here?
Yes.
That was not part of the agreement.
No, it was not.
Alright, are they parking in those, those spots, those two, that you noticed?
I don't know, I haven't been parking there. I've been parking two blocks away. I removed myself from the conversation about me parking my truck.
We're gonna do it. But I think that gets back to, I, I would like our employees to be able to park earlier.
So, are they doing it to be spiteful, or we don't know?
I don't know.
I'll stop there tomorrow.
I assume it's out of spite, well, out of spite because.
We gave them what they wanted?
They have the opportunity to have three public parking spots.
I will stop there tomorrow and talk to them.
Okay, that's why this is all temporary, it's, uh, changed anything too significant. We're, I, we, I was, and we were trying to do something just to help them out, and if it doesn't work, then we won't.
What was given can be taken away.
Exactly.
And actually reduce some more, cause then we could put signs up here that says it's for city employees only, city parking only.
Well, it, it's, the, it's, the ones in the front here are for, um, for customers that come in to pay and utility.
City all customers only. So we need more signs.
Now, speaking of signs, I saw that they put a twenty-five mile an hour, um, sign on, on the.
The other side.
Yeah, on like going out of, like past the high school.
Yes.
So.
Because that's the city road, and I did make that request to the street department to put that out there.
Yeah, and I think there's one, there, there's also, there's also one coming in, but it's like right next to the church, so. I, I was wondering, could we put it down more, like.
We can, we, we can, um, typically what they do, what the street department does, or tries to do is have. A speed limit sign and they're across the road from each other, from the different, from the signs, but I can make that request.
There was on, it was on a sign, that was already there, they just put it on that sign.
Oh, okay.
And I was like, if we put it down, we're actually by the development where you wanna do a slur.
I thought it was actually gonna be down by the dirt road or by the bridge.
Well, we can, but the county never agreed to that, right?
Correct.
So we can't do that, we can put it in front of the development.
Yeah, I thought the discussion was both the curb and, um, further by the development, because there wasn't a speed limit sign by the curb.
My thing is, if you're going faster than twenty-five, run that curb.
Right.
Yeah. Be crazy, but if we put it down further by the building. There is, there's a lot of kids. And it's growing all the time, you know, on our development.
There are a lot of young families out there.
And it's more and more every fall.
Yeah, more houses are coming in too. It's, it just hasn't stopped.
Up in the, like, I don't know how well the development, but like there's a, um, cul-de-sac.
Mm-hmm.
And somebody put a huge shed out there with no house. Can you have a shed with no house?
No, you gotta have, you gotta have a house.
Yeah, there's no house there, it's just a shed.
I bet you they probably got a house on order or something, they probably put the shed out there.
What we were told, or, this, talked to.
Where they buy two lots and merge them as one to put down.
It's just one lot in the cul-de-sac, it has a big old shed on it now, and they said like, yeah, we probably would never get a house, they, they said the owners of it, the lot, etc. Will probably never be able to agree to put a house there, so it's probably just gonna be the shed.
Nah, you can't just have a shed, I've talked to Blake about that, but ordinance doesn't, doesn't allow for that.
Blake would have to prove it, right?
Right, well.
Yep, cause it's, it's a huge shed.
Well, that depends, what does it look like, because there's one over in the other development, the other one was just kinda like a house. And it's, it's ju- it's just a garage, but it had to resemble a house.
Was that the one that had the house that burned, the one that burned down, or?
No, that, Denny built that when he was still, when they were out of state. That was a place for him to stay when they came back.
One, isn't, isn't there something?
In vast size.
On baskets?
Yeah.
Yeah, there are requirements on size.
Size, we, I think, I feel like I put another meeting with that, the size of the shed, which is a huge shed, and then, no house.
Yeah, cause it was just a garage and it has to be under one thousand.
It's not even a gra- I, I don't think there's a garage, I think it's just a door, like a regular door, it's just a shed. I could be wrong, but, but I drove past it today.
Uh, you gotta have a house, you can't just have a shed, no.
Especially in a new development.
Especially there, I mean, you can, you can't do that.
I think we just have one.
You want the buyer, can I?
Yeah, you keep it, we're using it. Um, we do have one lot in town that does that, but they've applied for various more birdies houses.
Yes.
Was that the one?
Oh, that's not the one that burned.
It's down on, uh. Wall Street?
Yeah.
Twelfth and Fifth.
Over there.
Yeah.
Till I pay day a little bit, we have to get on in about it.
Is that the one they had to stop for a little bit, cause they didn't do something?
No. It's the one that had noise complaints, cause they were, weren't no race car.
Good lord, the only one I knew about was the big one.
Seventeen?
Yep, yeah, well, no, and, um. The Frog Flats area, there was a small little house there, and then the house.
That was Bernie's.
That was the one.
Yeah, that's what I was talking about.
Put a house there after a while, there's now a house there.
I believe there is a house there.
There is a house there.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't go down there much, so.
Yeah, that one, you put in a house on that one.
Yeah, you put a house, that's way up, way up in there, right?
Well, there's a house there.
Yes, there.
I hear that one.
No, I wasn't, but I've heard about it.
Seventy-five thousand dollar design fee for the tractor, I think that's what it was.
And it cannot be used for any other purpose.
Yeah.
So we can't go and borrow it.
Have to take it in town. And then when they brought over the proposal, they didn't even take the time to take the other cities' names out.
That's disgusting. And it's still under.
It's gotten warmer outside.
Like, my friend who moved to Florida thought she was gonna get away with the snuff.
She took it with her.
Heart support had like eight inches.
They can't, they can't do that, like, they can't.
Like, New Orleans got nine inches.
Oh, they shut down.
They have no way to get in there.
It was, Houston had Wisconsin coming down there to help them.
No, they're not designing.